All right, I'm gonna call this meeting December 12th, 2013 of the Macon County Planning Board to Order. Glad everybody could get out tonight and it's good to see Mr. Ben Lassiter been based on the board. He did do a great job and he was recently appointed to staff to the planning board. And Ben, if you've got anything you want to say?
Just appreciate the opportunity to serve.
We're definitely glad that...
You won't say that.
Definitely glad that you're able to serve with us, Ben, and thank you for having the willingness to do so. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. These are from October 17th. If you recall, we canceled our November meeting as we didn't have a form. If we'll just look over, in looking over these minutes, this will tell a lot of where we're at in terms of our discussion that we're having regarding the surplus properties in Macon County. This was basically the highlights of the discussion, so read over those and once we take a look at them all, we're taking motion to approve.
I cleared the space.
Well, I read through them, but I don't hear about me.
I mean, attached.
Motion to approve. Okay, all in favor? Moving right along. We have our liaison comments. Commissioner takes something. They'll be with us soon. Public comment? No public comment? Old business. Yeah, he shook his head. He said he's just gonna run the road.
He always sit on my side.
Update planning board and discussions with department heads regarding surplus property assessment. Matt, have you discussed, we were gonna discuss some of the surplus properties with some of the department heads to see if there were any pressing issues within their department or they foresaw any need for the county to hold on to those properties that could benefit their departments. Matt, have you found out anything on that?
I sent out a mass email requesting information back and also sent them through John Moe. We had three departments that were emergency management looking for solid waste. We're looking at it and then looking at it. That's on, we didn't keep that from the health department, not investing in it. Solid waste is invested in potentially a couple pieces. It's built to, I don't know about the school board, and also the earth cement. Technically, it's still on the school. I did talk to some questions about the school board, whether or not they're investing in something. They said it was very expensive and he didn't.
They have a system under, what treatment system they have to maintain?
It is carbonated, yeah. He said it costs about $20,000.
What does it cost to be a patch?
I don't know. It's a, it's a carter, carter.
Well, I guess, you know, all I can say in that regard is if we're going to, you know, are we gonna allow, we give them one opportunity for the department heads to comment and give back with us. They've had two months on expenses since October. We've gotten feedback from three departments. So what's the feeling of the board on that decision?
I was gonna ask, did you get the chance to approach him by getting a agreement on that Highland Road property?
I did talk to, um, Captain, uh, Kay Correa.
Lake Correa?
Yeah, and they were in very interest in keeping that potential.
That's one of the properties that has some little, you know, natural resource that I think they should, they should, they're interested about it.
I mean, I talked to Tommy James to airport regarding the site at airport. And he kept saying that we should keep that and just, so it wasn't, it wasn't around the south end. I would say.
What about the other team? There was, there was, you're around the light, to the airport?
We did.
Yeah. Did you find out how he ended up with those or what the story was with that?
I cannot find that one. The Barnard Road, that's the last one on the list. The two on Bradley Creek, I did go with the those, that's the field trip home road and the Barnard Road. Also, Middle Creek. One down, I have no idea.
The two on Bradley Creek, they're two.
Right. That's subdivision, there's no house, and the road has a lot of roads and, I don't see anything big.
You want to know how much we got, is that right?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, but that's not the block, you have a county. So the fact of the law, around the airport, if you think you play, I guess it's the lake side and no light on, no people?
No, this is 3.25 acres and the feeding site on the other side of the ridge. And for some reason, we don't know why the county has grid core.
Sorry, this is the last. Should my property, I guess I've been more time to sit on for years too, on projects and tech a little bit. So if the county loses it, I don't know.
I think that's one opinion. The other opinion, I think it's, we'll get to say it in the back.
I think if we decide, maybe the county should surplus the property, then they can decide if they're holding to their weight and surplus it under the market.
Yeah, I think once we're not applying the reputation.
The county can get worried about it at that point.
So all my two county departments is interested in any of this property, and it's the Els School, both departments?
Solid Waste was also interested in the old garage. 164, yeah. I think that was it, Mark.
What was the interest and what were their, what did EMS want to do with the, or emergency management? What did they want to do with the Els?
I had talked to Jack and I talked about potentially promoting an issue with Southwest to get into a training session that's in a school, I admire, for resource officer. Where you've got mass amounts of kids and what to do responsibly. The other thing I talked to, they go, maybe allow Southwest to reduce the fire threat, smoke risk. That's the work, we're thinking of that.
But to do anything with that, the county must acquire the school board?
Right.
And then trade or?
We would have to, we would have to potentially, we would make a recommendation. The commission, we will see, I know what potential options are.
I also see some additional economic benefits to use for that to help the surrounding communities, use facilities for training.
Well, what's funny was the same day that I talked to Curtis Dallas, I questioned him, he talked to the school board about that. And they were like, say, on South Brooklyn, you know, Southwest. I think it could be a benefit, but it's still economic. Solid Waste is wanting to acquire the whole piece. His plan is to take the whole piece and do whatever's going on and make a large, resize it to center, because you want to follow the highway.
County do a weak property, outgrowth, fairly big, we're gonna like there is.
What about another water source? Is that tiny enough or are there potential uses at that site for initial water source for the town?
No, I wouldn't accept.
I think that last part because it's mine, so many kids.
It's a commercial line.
Right, I didn't know with its locale though, close to the river, I think it's a plant that's a plant that's looking at additional water sources. It's just something I was talking about, I didn't know.
And I know that, you know, in the discussions that the town has had, that that wasn't any of those. Coliseum wasn't any of the discussions, so. I would say that that would be an option for. So on this agenda, you know, since the school was becoming, becoming very here, we have ownership of that. The, not, I mean, department heads may have county's best interest, you know, we gotta talk about the county garage. Whether it's work, you know, to the service. What would they want to do with the old garage, old county garage, the solid waste?
Solid waste, he didn't really get into that. I don't know. But he gave me some numbers on the Highland Road and the Highland Road site is very busy. It's probably, I think it's a very kind of big, but it's also very damaged.
You know, they put the Flatland Road, it was a turning right there, you used to have a big, it's about four acres, it was.
So he said everybody from the Els County School, of course, he said, like, he was, had another side of it. I don't know if he explained to anybody, you guys, other side or?
Well, there's this one down the street.
He wants to pose it to, he wanted to design it, you know, how you broke it around?
Like a hill and around.
He wants some old brown level place. I don't know what his, what his plan is.
I think with that site, it would be tough to acquire it if you lost it. And to get it back.
Over on, yeah.
I also don't know that being that side of the town at any point, there's any much commercial growth out that way. Also, it would be the Highland Road, direction 4.1.
That should be the first.
So I guess my thought is, I don't know how easy it would be to sell it, but once you get rid of it, I don't know if there's any get back. Especially if what you're having to sell it for.
Now, the interesting thing is, good energy did just by the corner while I discussed that.
I think it always improves the county.
This did, right.
So without being said. Well, the school part with the, with the solid waste, that's, I'm not sure what that property at the corner of 64 and Rogers Road, where they used to set up the little soccer field out there. That would be a much better location for it. And they've recycled it. I'm not sure what.
I'm sorry, do you mean where you're talking about?
At the corner of Rogers Road and 64.
Big cars.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, but that school, you know, that's, that's had its fair share of accidents in. Now that entrance to the old Carden Church School, I mean Coliseum School.
Right.
I sort of like the idea of which, there again, we don't own the property, so it's hard for us to make a decision one way or the other. But the training, if, that's almost like if the, all the fire departments approached the county and said, you know that? Then at that point, maybe, it could be discussed with the fire departments in the county and then the county and the school board.
And to be honest with you, you know, when we started this, we were looking surplus property, county. And it's popped up, yeah, I could tell it said the school's going to find a board, show a lot of commission. And have it sit down, let's talk about it.
Well, if it's usable for the county there, we have plans that we might use it eventually. There's just really no room sitting on.
Well, I'd say with the school property, the county should look at acquiring it because it's costing the county, not the school board, $20,000 a year. Because county's huge part of the fund for the school board, so why not try to take advantage of that money and bring it back to the county? Try to use it.
That's different. For a second.
So is that, so we in a motion to have a conversation about school, not saying buy it, or just saying that things, look that closer?
Yeah, I would think that maybe with the family, the department heads, if they're willing to be bought with this type of, it's a possibility.
Do you see having input on it?
Possibly might have some input, but if they didn't see, well, if the county tried, solid waste, or five. Maybe somebody's gonna figure it out or should try to do it.
So just the motion should, I guess, replace our discussion and just encourage this option to be further evaluated by the powers that be.
With an indication that we did receive interest.
So just, in light of, in light of us receiving input back from the department heads that they thought this property would be an asset to them, we recommend that the commissioners, in cooperation with the school board, sit down and discuss the possibilities of, of using this piece of property. Is that your motion?
I'll just write it down, yes. So new.
But it's only the, the two properties that they have shown interest in.
This is strictly about just the Coliseum School. Did the county and the school board sit down, have a conversation about it, see if there's any potential use for the county? And really the school board?
I say you have a motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, now, the minutes reflect that motion passes. Moving right along. Talk about the garage property. The garage property, yeah, let's just hit that one here. Same things happened here. Multiple departments have shown interest in it and think that they could potentially use it in the future. Except for this time, we own it outright, so.
There again, that was solid waste.
Just solid waste at this point. Just solid waste, okay, just solid waste. This garage, we talked about that, solid waste at all point. Yeah, so.
Well, I agree, county owns the land. We need to try to use that property before the sale, so I thought last morning, perhaps identify the buyer, really the property. Everybody wants to save it, you know. Try to sell something.
Cause there's no other property that side of town, county owns right now, so we're required to?
The county would buy a, build, buy a two acre side of whatever that is, two acres, EMS setup, and everybody loves that. You can buy it, put it, all the neighbors up on it and everything else, so I think you, I think you need to be very careful about it.
Joe, you about?
Yeah, for the, for the old garage, I mean, we made a motion for that one to.
Yeah, that's everybody, everybody.
We have a motion to recommend the county hold on to the old garage.
And the state with the solid waste.
That's a motion? That's a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Now, going down the list, that leaves the Russell Church Road, which is these solid ways that all previously we've got. How far up that church is on 64?
It's, it's not off, it's before, it's got an attachment.
Off 64, up there, church is a half mile.
Maybe we'll move out of the side from there and then maybe establish track.
Just a little before the track.
Yeah. We've got to discuss that one, but I think Macon County co-op, we decided to get back to the brick doors, those building in. The Highland Road is the one out here, the little flag marker out the turn, it actually, actually turned around.
So I think, I think that was the key. I don't see if we can, I don't see if we can.
That motion?
Motion.
We have a second, we have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, and this airport piece of property, Matt said that he had discussed that with Tommy James. That's right there, you know, one of, right where the Forest Service building is there, 5.25 acres. And, you know, we talked last time about they cut those trees, they clear cut that hill where the flight path and everything there. So that's one of those that, you know, might be, did Tommy have anything to say about the restrictions on it or?
He didn't, but we talked about height restrictions, we probably did create that we called it height restrictions, so there's not a lot of restrictions on it.
I think also the FAA just, they're coming, you know, they made the ends of runway wide, they figured everything, yeah. Flared it out, you know, plenty of course, wide paths that you, that everybody, top of the trees out. Just one little boy, whatever you hear that one, it's probably the seat.
Yeah, they got, I, I shouldn't, I didn't like the problem. First, I think we.
Does North Carolina Forest Service have any support?
I've not talked to Bobby about that, but we can make a recommendation that we do.
If they can use it, if we have it, I'm willing to put some of this, try to take advantage of it.
Yeah, the state or county, that would be probably for any, the Forest Service.
I don't know, anybody, or a house or a home or anything, so.
Play usual, it's a farm.
Yeah, it's customary, I don't know.
All of the questions. So how is about all of it there?
How is about all of them?
Yeah, just, yeah. Now, so why would make that motion?
So.
Second. Further discussion? Yeah, good deal. All in favor, say aye.
Now, the last three, Middle Creek, that's 3.25 acres, that's a landmark. It's sort of an odd triangle shape.
Talk about keeping that and using it for a trade.
I would view it as, that's partially landmark, no access to that. We talked last one about keeping it, potentially trying to, we're talking to ourselves, it's not a, it's not.
Kids in the, last time. Sorry, we, whatever we talked about, the kid, the kid in county, so, the kid land, in county.
Probably would have, I would have, I've been saying that it was.
He's in the county, he always, for his values.
But now they're trying to, they might.
Well, now we, but I, I don't, you have to be careful, you can't, it's no different than selling it, right?
Okay. Do we have any tracks of Forest Service land that the county has ever looked at, made a potential track?
Generally, I don't know any Forest Service land anywhere close that would really be a, a, a benefit for the county. Or anything for the public citizen that, that we have, this little piece of landmark.
I don't believe in that, middle of nowhere, Middle Creek.
Say they have any use.
For the town, I mean, and it's not surround, is it surrounded by Forest Service or is it surrounded by?
It would, it would get by some forest.
So is that a big family that is true, that would ultimately be something like the college?
That's, there it is, the county rate the key for the trade.
Yeah, I don't think the county would do it.
Donation like, you land, it's too beautiful.
So what's happening, the private land?
There's two private land.
You know his name?
This landmark is no right way. Kills the value.
You can get it right away, but it'd be very expensive.
It's possible.
I zoomed it up too far and I can do that.
Good point.
That'd be the, probably the most realistic hope for that property, is to talk to those two landlords.
We could recommend that the county talk to the two joint owners.
Why would you want landlord, and there's a piece of property, you want to make it, hack it out of the way to it?
Yeah, but as we said, just tell them that we're considering it's all, we don't think it's.
Yeah, that's.
Susan, more to sell power. Susan, move the cell tower. No one's gonna bother us.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think that's it.
Why don't we recommend, you know, absolutely investigate this?
Okay.
I know a couple people, that's great, I really appreciate some coverage, I've got to go.
All right, we have a motion to that, babe.
We recommend the county investigate this position, I'll tell you, three quarters, two acres, two point two, three point two, five acres, a little bit, like, uh, like.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, now. It's the last two.
The last two, um, two tracks on Bradley Creek, which, oh, man, broke down subdivision. And then the piece on Barnard Road, and then.
We, I think we decided at the last meeting, those two in the subdivisions, just to, to try to sell?
Yeah, and Matt was gonna talk to, um, Habitat.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went out, I didn't get a chance to talk to him, but looking at it, it's a, maybe like, comment, it was only expensive to clean, and I'm like, I'm gonna look at this cheap lot. Little narrow, no money. Carson Island, City Habitat, you know, that's that kind of, just, just to get it for us. Two, three percent.
Habitat's just a good.
Town. You were in Iowa, Mr. Paul.
Really, really generous.
Olive, I don't, that's, you're in Olive, right there. On Garage Street. Oh, there, same deal, same.
That subdivision, there aren't any other houses up in it, aren't there? No HOA or nothing, he said, uh.
The whales are not even, up on.
What, the two?
Whales are drilled.
They're drilled, there's no pumps installed, no wire. I think county off going with one.
They don't fires.
Are they doing it or?
You wanna, you wanna strike out anymore?
I'm just trying to come through. We know some of the names.
All right, so. I think we're all in agreement on that, and I'll, uh, motion it out, so. All in favor? Okay, now we are to the Barnard Road. And that is, uh, that is one of the smaller tracks we had, three point two five acres. Barnard Hill.
Did it?
In the Olive League?
No, that's right where you turn on Olive Hill and you turn on Barnard Road. You know the old Barnard home place, Jesse Barnard?
That's true.
On the right, like you're going from, uh, Olive Road to Apple Road.
Yeah.
Was that one, you have, can I take a big position to it or no?
I think it's probably on the way back from now.
Where it's at, I don't see how it would have, if the county not worry about it.
Just curious, what's this other, like a county? There's a small square, it's not, you can't see it, it's actually a beacon inside of the airport.
Oh, okay.
It looks like the whole track is on the mud county, but it's, it's one is square.
Yeah, that it, county's driveway to the beacon, is it? I could see, well.
You think we might have had five, three point two five plus the beacon side to get the beacon side?
Doesn't look like it's adjacent.
Oh, yeah.
Still have to cross this border.
Yeah, it's a little square right in here, the, the building barns.
Of course, maybe there's.
I think the bridge runs right through here, too.
Right through the middle of it.
Yeah, so.
Oh.
They've got, currently on the website.
I'm pretty sure.
We could talk to the months ago, I didn't, actually, see myself, a little bit more of it, so. If I'm not mistaken, the fire department, down there, they're still looking. He had a side closure, I don't think, when they graded that off to the runway extension up there on Children's Home, that piece. They were trying to, uh, pump them out, using that as a satellite station.
You just put on this and paint and go.
About, how, would that be a potential use? Uh, how long does it take to get to, onto a road like that?
Sure, it's a lot quicker than coming from.
Where they are now.
Yeah.
It's an improvement, I had to stop hoping.
I think they're too far off from the main road.
I think you want to be on pavement, very near the pavement.
Okay, but, uh.
I'm just thinking, you know, where the other side, up here on, which would be to the right, under the page, that's still, that's a pretty good way to enter the pavement. Even from there, may be just as far as this.
Surrounding neighbors, rural market.
So places, if they were like we did, you know, go for. Go far as much.
Send a motion?
Yeah.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Last one is the Bethel Church Road.
So this was the one they bought for solid waste and then used it?
They had a lot of it proved back from the neighbors. That must be like the late times, when you found high gate, you took it in right now.
They probably, I think they, forty two thousand.
That one's real bright. Fifty five thousand, fifty bucks to the airport. I'm really lit, when you get that out, they.
Just gotta turn around, through the middle of it.
Well, that could be doing, I, I.
And that's not necessarily that thing anymore.
The fact that I probably spent a steep, though.
Yeah, you just have no flat.
There is a little bit, uh, talking to Jack, Jack's a little up right up here, talking to Paige, he said that one of the neighbors had a property on the school last time. His personal opinion is only one house, I really didn't have to leave power line for him. That's his opinion.
Is that where the whole house was, I guess, or close to it?
What are you telling him to keep it there?
If they're not going to put in a recycle center, then.
Would that be something that Habitat might have to.
Now, that could be, something, maybe we can approach the school, or, or have it done about trading that for someone on the school side, or, tell them how that's on the.
So it would go far above the grade, good speed. Followed waste out there, too, I think.
It would, yeah, the grading, I think the biggest thing would throw back to the neighbors.
You have a two apartment site ready for landfill, or, I mean.
I'm saying that, because that part of that's actually fairly flat. Going back there to about where the power line.
So they probably have it approved for.
Yeah, kind of like some of the other smaller towns. Where I love going off the paper side.
There's a, there a recycle center down there across from, I didn't know.
Yes, it did.
They found it closed.
Oh, but.
Would it just.
It's still there, and it, I talked to Chris about that, it is his claims, that he wants to get a bigger one somewhere else than the coast, uh. Just because it doesn't just, uh.
Do I have a photograph? Camera slide, or? I just would wonder if it would be an alternative site for, for the other recycle center. Or a part of it would be, part of it could happen that. Because that's a lot of frontage.
Yeah. Um, I'd say the county's not going to touch that for playing for the side.
It's over ten years.
Yeah, almost fifteen. Also, it's been playing fifteen years ago, it's closed, for all his friends and, and his community, and Chris been talking about that a long time, I see.
So, yes, because they touched on more than actually, out, uh, planned it.
Well, this wasn't one they said they were interested in.
Before someone else, to know, and that's, we're to, for that.
Why don't we break the minimum, uh, redeem disposition option, when you mention habitat, do the same, the neighbors, probably real soon.
Now, motion, yeah. We have a second. Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's it? Um, one thing about the sale of these properties, and I'm assuming that it's the, uh, the county commissioners' decision on how they go about selling this, but to me, it seems like, um, it'd be much better off putting this land that we're gonna sell, or we're gonna recommend to sell, on a land auction versus land, uh, to listed in a real estate agency.
Yeah, I think the county requires, I mean, disposal probably have to advertise it, it's not exactly often, but bid, I guess, would be the way to try.
Oh, is that what it is?
There's not so many days to counter off.
So Susan makes ten thousand, you make fifteen, and, you know, ten more days, or twenty days, then I could go, let, up again, you know, like.
And then once that process is fine, uh, that's.
Then it's done, so there's not a listing in an actual real estate agency?
Usually not.
Okay.
Well, normally it would be on the county side of those properties, is there some way to make it more visible?
Yes, and I think that's where the county's gonna have to, if anyone sells it, we'll have to step up, decide how, how they're gonna get it more visible.
Advisors.
That was a good discussion? Moving right along to new business, reintroduce comprehensive plan, and discuss integration into making counties current and future planning.
The, uh, we put the comprehensive plan back up on the website, on the planning department web. So you go to makingnc.org, go to departments, go to the planning department on the left-hand side, it's kind of hard seeing it wide up now, it says comprehensive plan or something like that. I would ask to open it next couple of weeks, felt like it was a bit, and we can, we'll come back after Derek's gone, in county management, we've got a new chairman, a new vice chairman, I believe, that next month. Once we get some of that settled down, but hopefully we can start looking at it.
Are the dependencies online, too, when you sent us the copy, they were not included in terms of, I mean, economic development, it refers, the dependencies for recommendation for they, like, NBC, and a couple others, to know whether they're, can give it.
I do not know, if they were not, and you have certain warrants, I mean, you know, I can send that.
Okay, just because there were, the recommendations referred that, so we couldn't go to see it, in the main.
I think that I posted the one approved by the commissioner, and there's a lot of information I do need to make.
Basically, what the commissioner approved was the, um, recommendations, and the rest of the plan is the supporting documentation for the commission. So, if we can get that, I better tell them.
So for those of us who have ever printed, and we don't have laptops, if we want, how we do that?
I pray their back, or, I think, yeah.
It's, it's a shoe, man.
I'm sorry, I took it out of my head.
I'd like to find a board, I'll request that, I've had it.
You made that phone a month ago. Well, they probably keep.
Oh, yeah, well, you'd be surprised how much it.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't think we even get into any comprehensive plan, uh, especially.
Is there anything else, anybody, uh, discuss about the land, or anything else? Uh, no, I was gonna backtrack a little bit, I got to thinking about something. You said that Duke Energy had bought a piece of land up next to the old county garage?
You know where Roller Mill comes in the west of Murf, the Old Town, they demoed it, they bought that piece right there.
Okay, um, if, if by chance Duke Energy is interested in that, one of them, which is something that I was thinking about that being, um, if there's a tract of land that Duke Energy owns that may work for us, we may be able to swap that land, but that's just.
And I think that's a purpose of this, you think, this one, is, there's somebody up there, this one, or.
Yeah, there's a lot more about that.
This is Derek's last meeting, before taking over our county management.
Yeah, I was, uh, I was gonna tell you, I've served in some capacity on this board for five years, whether it be planner, or, uh, a member, or, in the final days there, the chairman, so I kind of came full circle, and, uh, it's just been, it's been a fun and interesting, five years, we've tackled a lot of, a lot of projects, and we, and had a lot of controversy come our way, but, you know, through it all, we've, we've got an excellent subdivision of limits, we've got a comprehensive plan, we, you know, discussed some very heated and controversial topics, and we've been able to come out of that with our, with our good tail high, and, uh. It's, I just, I really appreciate everybody sitting here tonight, I appreciate, oh, Mark and Susan are the old veterans here tonight.
Well, Mark's not here.
Yeah, but Mark technically.
Yeah, he's been here about twice along with us.
You know, it's, uh, it's a thankless job, and, and, as coming up in two thousand nine, twenty four years old, I, I look at the people, and Susan and Mark were on board at the time, and people like that, that is, that's what gave me a heart for public service, and just seeing the dedication you guys have, and the willingness that you guys have to take up these conversations, and, and do this work, it's, uh, it says a lot about somebody, about everybody sitting here, you know, we all got a little bit of that in us, we're gonna be sitting here, and, and at the end of the day, it's, we're good, a couple of love making county, and that's, uh, it's a pleasure to sit around the table and have a conversation with a group of people, and share that. And I just said, it's been, it's been a fun ride, and, and this is where I get off.
You get off? You ain't get off, you just moved up into the driver's side.
I had to say, when Derek first came home, twenty three year old, and not much back then, Black Mountain, I was a few years, and a lot of people were. better than I'm planning, and I was confused, and a lot of people were, but, uh, when I saw that he was county manager, I didn't have a least doubt, you take it on, do it, because you just, you done a great job there, you learned what you needed to learn, and that day here, and you do that.
Thank you, Susan, I really miss you. I really miss y'all as well, and, again, I appreciate you, really good, and I wish, uh, wish the best, for the greatest one of y'all, boards are good hands, I believe, Chris is, is the vice chairman, so, I guess he'll be picking up the torch.
Just one month.
But, and with nothing else, Matt, when's the next meeting?
Our next meeting will be...
Will you be able to share some more?
I'm waiting to hear back from Jimmy, taking on that.
Vice chair, like, we have a guy.
What we can do, we can do one of two things, I can talk to Jimmy, see, we go ahead and schedule a regular meeting, and if that changes for some reason, make us in that council session. It would be, uh, third weekend, maybe sixteenth of January.
So, we're going to say, like, cancel.
Did you get that, Bobby, sixteenth, four o'clock? We'll schedule it, commissioner's Saturday, one to launch it, maybe, come on, ten, like...
You have a motion to adjourn?
So, huh?
Second?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Eric, you're welcome.
Appreciate you.